This time I'd like to call to order the January 20th, 2015 City Council Meeting for Yukon, Oklahoma. If you would rise with me for the invocation from Pastor Mark Borsuth and the flag salute from Resurrection Lutheran Church.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for your faithfulness to us and to this city in 2014 and all the years before. And now we dedicate all this that we're doing in this new year to glorify you and to be a blessing to our citizens, to be a blessing to those who visit here, to be a blessing to all who are affected by this community. And we just ask that you would bless our city council members, our city staff, all the employees of our city, and just keep people safe and healthy, blessed relationships, blessed effectiveness, and just give wisdom and direction in this new year. We pray these things just to glorify you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
This time we will conduct a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the 2015 Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. There is, by the way, a sign up sheet that is going to be passed around for those in attendance. Do we have anyone here that would like to address the council regarding this matter? Do we have anyone here that would like to address the council regarding this matter? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and proclamations. Do we have?
None this evening.
None this evening. This is our visitors' section of our agenda. Anyone that would like to address the council. We have not received any submittals for anyone to address the council this evening, so we will move on. We will recess as a Yukon City Council and reconvene as a Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A is the YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A) the minutes of the regular meeting of January 6, 2015, and B) payment of material claims in the amount of $321,306.36. Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Having no discussion, call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Item 2 is to present, discuss, and consider accepting the fiscal year 2013-2014 Yukon Municipal Authority City of Yukon audited financial report as prepared by Darrell S. We'll have a short directive from Mr. White. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to get to come back this year and go over the audit with you. I won't have a lot of detailed comments here, just want to make some general observations and certainly be happy to answer any questions. We did issue an unmodified opinion with no findings for internal control or compliance, which is kind of the main goal of the audit. You know, kind of more importantly, I think basically one of the byproducts of our audit is always basically to evaluate, get a good evaluation of the system processes and in particular basically what the changes or improvements are from year to year. And one of the criteria that we always use is number one is the system as it's designed, given the size and resources adequate. That's pretty easily answered yes every year for your guys. The second part of that question, I'm real happy to tell you that basically we really like the direction this system's going. You know, I think this is the third or fourth year that we've done the audit. Basically, a couple of things that we've always got tremendous cooperation from all the staff. I think that one of the things, and I've said this before, that you can't have a good system without starting with a good tone at the top. And I think Grayson provides that. You know, he clearly specifies what his expectations are for staff and basically it's apparent when we do inquiries at all levels and we talk to a lot of different city employees at different departments, they're very, they understand basically what the expectations are, what they're supposed to be doing, and kind of what the goal is. And his goal for this system is pretty high. And, you know, we're not yet to the point where we're perfect, but it gets better every single year. I think as much as anything else, what we like to see is that as we identify different things within the system that are really not necessarily problems, certainly not things that have to be reported in the audit, but that are opportunities kind of for improvement, when we come back the following year, every single year those have been addressed and positive improvements have been made. And so overall, we, like I said, we have a pretty high opinion of the overall system and direction it's going. You know, this was the first year, that first full year that J.I. had been in his position. And one of the things that we did like seeing, we really liked that the role of his position has expanded a little bit. That was one of the things, the very first audit that we did, we felt like that that was something that needed to happen, and he's taken on that role real nice. You know, I'm not going to dig into a lot of the numbers and everything because there's really nothing that significant. The budgetary process basically is working well, and more importantly than that basically there's very little difference between the monthly reports that you guys get and the final audit report. And so that gives you a good indication that you guys are relying on good information throughout the year, which makes it less important to, you know, to really, you know, talk about a lot of the numbers. That's kind of all I had, just want to kind of give an overview of that. And I appreciate the opportunity to get to talk about it, and we wish every audit was just like this.
Thank you. That's good to hear, Mr. White. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. White. Just, you made some general comments, but I'd just like to have a little bit of specifics. I mean, you made a couple of comments. You said you liked the direction that system is going, so what direction, I mean, so we can understand that, what does that mean?
Okay. Basically, one of the things that we feel like that is extremely important in city government today is that we're becoming, we have to be both more and more accountable and more and more transparent. That's, you know, we kind of see city government as kind of being a steward of the citizens' funds, and because of that basically, the controls and processes, individual controls and processes that were real adequate, say 10 years ago, would be really inadequate today. And so when we look at things, we look at both things from kind of a macro approach, a kind of overall picture, and then look at specific processes that make up that entire system. And to kind of give you some examples, one of the things that basically that we felt like that has always been pretty good but has definitely improved is the process of basically billing and billing reconciliations in particular. There's a lot of risk for you there because you've got a lot of, there's a lot of different places where that system can break down, all the way from meter readings to input errors to things like that. And so one of the things that we've seen continued improvement is, is that basically we have fewer errors that go outside of the automated system in terms of from, all the way from the reading all the way to the billing and collection of that. And even more important than that is basically that there is, when mistakes are made, and every system's going to have mistakes, I mean, it's, but the mistakes are identified, there's processes for identifying a mistake very quickly and correcting it.
Okay. One issue that at least I get asked about often are the status of our retirement and pensions. Can you elaborate? How's this?
Yeah, we're improving every year, made major improvements from basically the first time that we did that. One of the things that's helped that obviously is that the market's been good, which basically has adjusted to actuarial, you know, assumptions in terms of rate of return. But there's also been, that's been kind of one of Grayson's made things since he's been here too, is to kind of shore that up. And so we are contributing additional amounts to basically catch up that underfunded status. And I think basically we'll be fully funded here in not too distant future.
What are the levels of funding right now?
There's a detail here on, back, I'll kind of direct you right to that. The, on page 39, the, well, really, she was going to start, it was going to start all the way on, back on page 36. The, if you look at that chart on page 36, down about two-thirds of the way down, our liability, our unfunded liability there, and that is 7.6 million. That's a funded ratio of 70%. That is probably, I'm going to say, say for Oklahoma cities, that's probably slightly above average. The big thing is that, is that, is that that percentage has gone up significantly each year. And so we're moving towards, towards the right direction. The actual, the actual accrued liability, AAL, is generally kind of overstated. It assumes some things that basically that probably are not going to live out is in terms of basically how long people are going to live and things like that. And so our value of assets basically is, is that's as of today, you know, if we were to basically have that entire obligation today, we'd be 7.6 million underfunded. Yeah, on page 39, you can see that that is the, that is the, that is, the first one we're talking about basically covers everybody other than police, fire, and that are basically under contract. Or on page 39 is our other pension obligations, and that is, you know, shows that as being fully funded. And so that's a, that's a major improvement.
So who falls under this on 39?
This would be, this would be the police, fire, and that would be, that would be all on that.
On 39 is police and fire, page 39?
Nope, that's general employees, that's everybody.
That's the general employees, right.
Retired.
Yes, already retired employees.
Okay, so these are retired. And then back on 36?
36 is going to be everybody other than police.
Current employees except for police and fire.
Right.
Now, Darrell? I think that may include police and fire.
Uh...
Because I know our general employees are about 100%. Fire's at 65, police are at about 95.
Okay, that is correct. That chart basically shows all three systems.
Think it's safe to say there's few communities that could compete with those numbers as far as percentages of funded for overall city employees.
Overall, that's correct. And like I said, the main thing, you remember, you know, three or four years ago, I'd kind of, you know, talked about that, that basically at that point in time, expressing in a rate of low interest rates, you know, we had to basically start doing something with all cities to basically start addressing that, or it was just not a sustainable system. You know, the main thing is that basically we have basically increased, increased that funding significantly.
Okay, I have a couple more questions on the same topic. So with that 69.8 or 70%, and it's just, this is a topic that I get a lot of questions on, so you're here tonight, I'm not picking on you, I'm just trying to...
No problem.
So with this 69.8, how long before, you said that you thought it wouldn't be too long, is that a year or two years? I mean, are you making estimates?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, and it would be, and it's just kind of educated guess, but basically if that we were, if we see a continued trend in expected earnings, which I think is probably a safe assumption, that's assuming that basically interest rates go up, stock market basically kind of goes up. You know, I think really to get to a, fully to 100% on all of the plans, it's a four- or five-year process because, you know, for one thing, the police and the fire basically are kind of outside of our control in terms of basically how fast we do that. You know, to maintain really kind of 100% status, you know, on the rest of the government employees, if those assumptions are right, basically we're going to be, you know, we're within a year or two of basically having that, you know.
Okay, so but for the police and fire, we're almost 100% funded?
That's correct, yeah.
And the police are 90-some percent and the fire are 60-some percent?
60-some, yeah, 65% I believe.
And the police and fire are both regulated by statute, which is all we do is contribute according to what the statute says. We have no control over that.
Right.
Okay, so this 69% is actually over what we have control, the numbers up into the 90s?
Yeah, 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 that's absolutely right.
Okay. Okay, one other. Since there, you said there's opportunities for improvement, what areas do you see, where are there opportunities for improvement?
You know, one of the things that we had kind of suggested, you know, because of the size of city, you know, two or three years ago, and kind of going back to kind of J.I.'s position, was that at the time when we started doing audits, we kind of, everything kind of operated in a silo, you know, so this department kind of does their thing, and this department does their thing, and it really wasn't anybody that was kind of bringing that all together, making sure that interacted. And that, and that was the suggestion that we had for that, for that rule was to, was to really kind of operate in a true kind of CFO fashion, kind of overseeing and integrating those things. And that's an area we've seen, you know, really solid improvement on. The thing that has not been an issue much in the past that will, that looks like it's probably going to be, and probably if I had to kind of pick a weak link in the system, and that's, and that's grant administration, that, that has really been departmentalized in the past. You look at, at the largest grant by far that we've got is phenomenally well-done, and that was a storm shelter. The girl over there that basically does all that, I don't know that we do an audit that basically, I would love to find her have something out of place, literally. I mean, you know, you ask for it, it's right there. You know, in the past, we haven't really been a recipient of a lot of, a lot of grant funds, and so now there's some opportunities with CDBG grants, there's a lot of opportunities now with Homeland Security and those type of things, and those have primarily been kind of departmentalized. And one of the suggestions that we made, and Grayson and J.I. agreed, is that we take a look at some ways to kind of bring some oversight kind of from a central point, you know, to improve control and oversight of those.
What about the TIF, our new TIF district? I mean, did you have an opportunity to evaluate that, and has it had a positive or negative effect?
We think it's had, has a positive effect. I think it's, I think it's a little bit early at this point to really kind of, you know, make some judgment, but basically administratively it worked pretty well, you know, so, which was, which was, we actually assessed that district as a high-risk area in our audit because it was new, number one. You know, number two is we've got some other cities that is being, it's very problematic. You know, I think that basically, you know, how that that, how that that basically impacts economically long-term, we feel like it's probably going to be a pretty big, a pretty big benefit. I think it's a little early to say that for sure yet.
Okay. I can think of some more, but that's probably, I'm teasing, I appreciate your time very much.
You're right.
I do have a question. Just, you know, going along with the TIF district a little bit, so you feel at this point that it's being well-administered?
We do, yeah. You know, and that was one of the things, when we kind of look at kind of the overall system, one of the things that basically that we put a lot of emphasis in is as new things come up, how well does that system, how well is that system adapted to that? You know, are we anticipating, kind of, you know, it's kind of a risk assessment kind of process that the city has to go through, or every organization has to go through. And, you know, overall, they did a much better job at this than some of the other cities that we do in terms of kind of anticipating where that could go wrong, what issues may come up, and really designing a system that, you know, to operate effectively in that.
Yeah, because we've got a lot at stake long-term in this, obviously a pretty fair amount of money. And, you know, we were all, I think, have expressed concerns, but yet feel like it's a real opportunity to move forward. So, you know, my question is, you feel that the controls and balances and everything else financially are in place to be able to do the right things and control?
Yes, we do. And we think that basically, that kind of goes back again to, you know, when you have basically a strong tone at the top and basically effective oversight at the top, basically makes those type of things, you know, work a lot more effectively. It's still, it's still basically represents some risk. It's something that, that you have to basically be kind of on top of all of the time.
So you feel like the structure is good with the YEDAs, we've got it set up and all of that sort of thing, and that it's going the right way? That's, that's the question. Okay. Thank you very much. John stole all my other questions on the pensions, because I've asked about that the last couple of years, so thank you very much.
Do we have any additional discussion? One quick question, if I understood this correctly, one of the areas that we could improve on is oversight of grant administration.
Administration.
So Grayson, you and J.I. agree that that's an area we can improve on, is that something that we are, that is going to be additional responsibilities for J.I.? Are we going to need an additional city employee that that's their responsibility? Or what magnitude are we talking about here?
Probably not a full-time employee of the city, more like a contractual arrangement with ACOG or some of the experienced people that are around us in the administration of grants, more on a contractual basis rather than a full-time employee.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess just one, just a little side note there. On the, with the grants and everything, you know, coming like they do is, I guess, and the question I'm asking is, does it apply more to the, after we get the grant, how we take care of it, or our pursuit of the grant?
More, from our standpoint, basically, more basically what happens after you get the grant in terms of, especially, and look at example of that is basically the emergency shelter is not an easy grant to administer because there's eligibility requirements, there's, you know, there's, there's different things that have to be done, and that's been done extremely well. So we know that, we know that basically it can be done within this system. The problem, the only problem that we had, and we had four, five, or six grants this year, more than we'd had in the past, and we didn't find any indications where we'd had, as example, your big risk is unallowable expenses. If you basically had expenses that you thought were allowable that we determine or the granting agent determines are not allowable under that grant, that, that's really the worst possible scenario because you have to turn around normally and send a check back for that. We didn't find any instances of unallowable expenses. When we say that basically we'd like to see that, that system improved, there wasn't really any one place that we could go to to make sure that that had happened and that we were spending money. It was more, it was more dependent upon the individual department manager as opposed to one person kind of saying, make sure that you do this, this, and this, instead of relying on the audit as after the fact.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do we have any further discussion? Having none, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
This time we'll adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. Item 1 is a consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A) the minutes of the regular meeting of January 6, 2015, B) payment of material claims in the amount of $488,528.43, C) an agreement for the services between the City of Yukon and Project Graduation for the term of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for the amount of $250 upon proper application. D is the submittal of grant application for the 2015 Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. E, an agreement for services between the City of Yukon and Yukon Cemetery Association beginning on the first day of February 2015 for the amount of utility payments to the City of Yukon. F is setting the date for the next regular council meeting for February 3, 2015, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers at the Centennial Building, 12 South, 5th Street. Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3, present, discuss, and consider accepting the fiscal year 2013 and 2014 Yukon Municipal Authority/City of Yukon audited financial report as prepared by Darrell S. White, CPA. Do we have a motion?
Motion to...
Sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? I think we covered that, didn't we? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 4 is consider approving a conditional use permit from Central Oklahoma Marketing for installation of a 14-by-24-foot electronic billboard for off-premises advertising, one pole, double-faced sign, one facing the north and the other facing south at Yukon Parkway West, Lot 1, Block 1, known as 1500 Garth Brooks Boulevard, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the planning commission. Do we have a motion?
Show move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I was reading through the notes and everything on that, and they originally started off with 14 by 24, and then they said something about a larger sign, and finally they approved the 14 by 24. So they would have to come back as a completely new issue if they wanted to change that again, or if they want to comment on that.
If we increase the size, they would have to come back and have their conditional use permit reviewed and then submit it back to the council.
So it would come back to the council a second time if the...
If increased in size, yes.
Yeah, and it's going to go right down there where the oil stuff is, right, just...
Pretty close, yes.
Yeah, just north of the bank there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that reviewed annually, the conditional use permit?
Yes.
Because there's some DOT lighting requirements and stuff too about that.
ODOT requires them to have an off-premises sign permit as well, and it's an annual permit too as well.
Oh, okay.
And there's requirements on digital billboards along High 40 corridor too, so...
We'd had some discussion previously about the amount of light that actually goes out onto the interstate and whether or not it would be distracting.
At nighttime, I have a dimming device that dims the billboard, and then if it fails, then it has a fail device to turn the billboard off typically.
Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion, call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to move item 8, the city manager's report, up on our agenda. These are information items only.
Another month of good news concerning sales tax. Uh, another month of, uh, good news concerning sales tax. Pardon me, our sales tax for the month was up by ten point five eight percent, bringing our total year-to-date, uh, to three point four percent. Uh, very, very good news. We anticipate that next month is also going to be, uh, another good month, because this really did not catch all of the, uh, Christmas period, so, uh, uh, really looking forward to next month, uh, as much as, as this month. In May, uh, our May, uh, second meeting in May, May nineteenth meeting, uh, we need to move to Thursday, the twenty-first. That is, uh, Thursday, May twenty-first, uh, same time, seven o'clock here in the council chamber. This is the first of what will be a monthly notification about moving that meeting from the nineteenth to the twenty-first. It is a change in the routine, going from Tuesday to Thursday night. Also, uh, I, I have placed in front of you, uh, the YEDA, Yukon Economic Development Authority Quarterly Report is required by our memorandum of understanding with the city. Um, basically, it is a financial report, uh, which you have received previously, uh, talking about the, uh, construction of the Health Center Parkway, um, a item concerning zoning that you will be asked to review in the future, uh, concerning the SMART code, which I believe, Mayor, you and Councilman Albert have been a part of developing, and that'll be presented to you soon. And then also, a, uh, a short synopsis of a meeting, uh, the ICSC meeting in Dallas, Texas, and what took place there. There are some other financial informations there that I hope you will take a moment to review, but this is the, uh, the quarterly report as required by the MOU. Uh, finally, uh, an events report, Saturday, January the thirty-first, is the Daddy Daughter Dance. Uh, actually, guys, uh, there are three dances. Uh, this, uh, particular, uh, activity has grown to the point that we started with one, we went to two, we couldn't serve all the public with two, now we've gone to three. It's a great event. I hope that you will take your daughters, or your granddaughters, and, uh, go to the Daddy Daughter Dance. Also, on Saturday, February the seventh, is the Yukon Chocolate Festival, also at the Dale Robertson Center. Uh, please make, uh, advance, uh, uh, reservations to go by buying your tickets. Uh, also, it, um, it serves a great purpose, uh, in our library and the, uh, youth programs of our city. We hope that you will take that opportunity and go. Also, I have placed in front of you, finally, our quarterly report of the, uh, capital improvement projects that were completed for the, uh, quarter, October the first through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, with that, Mayor, I will conclude my report, stand ready for your questions.
Do we have any questions from the council for our city manager?
I just, uh, I had one, uh, short one here. We were looking at this, uh, sheet that was handed to us on the, uh, Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, opportunity with the update and everything. Uh, I was trying to get into a timeframe on this, is there any timeframe on this, or...
It will be, uh, after the award. Uh, this is only the budget for the application.
So there's no, there's no timeframe?
Not really any timeframe, no.
One quick question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Russell?
On this, uh, council meeting change, is that just the May nineteenth, or...
Just the May nineteenth meeting, that, that meeting only.
Okay, all right. I'll have to...
There'll be more announcements as we go along, we have several months to get ready, but wanted you to know, early on...
That, um, Oklahoma Environmental Management that, um, that meets on Thursday night, so I'll have to tell them I won't be at it.
We have an alternate to, to cover you two, I think. You're right.
Do we have any additional questions? We'll move to item five, I will consider a motion to recess as a Yukon City Council and convene into executive session for discussing the employment of the city manager as provided in twenty-five OS two thousand and three, section three oh seven B one.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need to call a roll on it?
Need to call a roll.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Item six is to consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, call the roll. Oh, do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. Item seven is to consider a motion to amend the terms of the city manager's employment contract.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would move that we amend the city manager's contract to change his compensation to one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars annually, and set the matter for review at the second council meeting in July of two thousand and fifteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Um, I would just like to mention that, uh, dollar amount, um, is just a whisker over the two point five percent pay increase that all city employees had received in this past year. Do we have any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item nine is new business.
No new business.
No new business. Item ten is council discussion. Councilman McCarron?
Well, I was going to thank everybody tonight, but, uh, everybody's left except Arnold and Bill and John, so, thank you guys for, uh, all your service and...
Thank you for staying.
And, and Larry and everything. I, I do think, uh, did want to mention for everyone that's listening, uh, Walmart will be opening up on the, uh, north side of, uh, north side of town tomorrow morning, uh, for a ribbon cutting at seven-thirty, uh, represents, uh, twelve years of waiting for a grocery store on the north side of town, and I think it's a pretty neat thing. Uh, I did, uh, also want to say, so that everyone hears it as well, thanks to J.I. and Darrell, uh, for a, uh, very, very good audit. I was very pleased with the things that they had to say, and represents, uh, moving forward, and, uh, I've certainly been around audits in the past that, uh, didn't look anything near as, as, as good as this has. So, uh, once again, uh, for me, I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Russell?
I think he said it all right there.
All right. Councilwoman Yanda?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Albert?
I, I, I concur with what Mr. McCarron said about the audit and everything, it's great, and I think that also, it, it shows that, you know, we have great leadership with Grayson, and that he's doing an excellent job, and Grayson, thank you for putting up with us for another year, and we're looking forward to another year with you, and congratulations on all you've done, and the great things that we look forward to having, and then also the great staff that you've put together and helped assemble, and it's excellent to hear reports from this gentleman that talk about how, you know, he wished that he could find a mistake. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a, that's an excellent goal, that he can't find one, and I mean, that, that's, you know, I have a lot of questions about how stable, you know, our city is, and I, I, it just helps so much to have that kind of report, and to have him come here and present that, and then answer our questions, and just answered them solidly, and I think leaves no doubt that I'm convinced that we are in excellent shape, and I, I appreciate your hard work, and I, we're just moving forward, leaps and bounds, and thank you for your hard work, I appreciate it.
I have nothing this evening, and with that, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you for staying, Robby.